And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The agenda is printed or amended will be called so unnecessary needed action by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Business run through is welcome and allotted for on our agenda. One comments from the floor may must first be recognized by the mayor, second state and the unit address to the record, and there you'll have no more than three minutes to state your current concerns. And there are agendas available at the back of the room.
All right. You accept the motion to approve or amend the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
If there are no changes, I would move as presented.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
We talked last Thursday about moving 7B up into consent.
So did.
I would accept that, that we would move 7B to consent. And make that number point 10.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And lieutenant?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to present the council report for the month of March 2017. In March, sheriff's deputies responded to 98 calls for service in the city. There were seven calls to bar none this month. Kind of a variety of calls, but two of them included assaults against staff members. A couple of noteworthy calls for service. On March 4th, a deputy was on routine patrol in the 19600 block of West Ford Brook Drive. And as was driving through the area, noticed a gentleman standing on that property that had a felony warrant for their arrest. And it was nice, the deputy was able to stop and take the man into custody and transport him to jail. But what I liked about reading that call in that report was this deputy has spent enough time in town and enough, knows enough about some of the people that are coming and going that they had a, had an idea of who had warrants that might be in the area. We have warrants lists that, we break them up by geography. So when they're, when the deputies are working in specific areas, they can look for people that have these outstanding warrants. And it was just nice for me to see that a deputy had been paying attention and without even getting a call there, was able to drive by a house and see a person that had a warrant and take them into custody and get them to jail so they could go see a judge regarding their warrant. Because one of the things that we often get asked with some of our contract cities is, do deputies that don't live there truly know what's going on in the city? And know the people that are coming and going? And we always try to explain to people that we really think they do. And for me, this was just a good, a good piece of information to show, yeah, our deputies are paying attention. They, they know who's around and what's around and know what, what to be looking for. And then on the 15th of March, at 2:36 in the morning, a deputy was called to a property damage crash involving a vehicle in the mailbox in the 200,000 block of Boss Street Northwest. When the deputy arrived, or prior to the deputy arriving, another vehicle stopped and picked up the driver of the vehicle that had hit the mailbox. And they left, leaving the vehicle at the scene. Luckily, the deputy got information about the vehicle that had picked up the other driver, located them down on Now Then Boulevard, and ultimately identified who was driving the vehicle that crashed into the mailbox and whatnot, and arrested that person for DUI. Interestingly enough, it was a 19-year-old young lady. And neither of the people involved in the incident were from the city of Now Then. Just passing through and at 2:30 in the morning. Just seems a little bit odd to me.
Suppose with the cell phones, they call for help pretty quick and find you out of there.
Exactly.
Forgot they left the car behind.
Well, and we didn't even need that at this point. Somebody got a description of the vehicle that they left in, and that was all the deputy needed. So.
That's pretty good, at 2:00 in the morning, somebody getting a description for you.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to point out, over the month, we actually had three different types of fraud cases in the city. I know I talk about it an awful lot, but we had three completely different types of frauds that happened to people. One of them, a victim was contacted and told that, "You've won this prize from this group of people, and we'll give you $525,000. We just need you to send us a check for $20,000 to secure and ensure your winnings." Luckily, we're very appreciative of this, the victim went to the bank to get the cashier's check. And the bank said, "You know, I don't think this, this is probably a good idea." So they didn't have the loss. And that case is being looked at and to see if we can track down and identify a suspect in. But then another, this is a little more clever fraud. A person had been contacted by a business that they had actually applied to work at by a payroll department, saying, "Okay, we're gonna hire you, and we just need you to send, you know, we're gonna send you a check. And then we just need you to cash that at your bank and send us this amount of money back out of that check, and here's how to do it." And the person thought, "Well, I applied for a job here, this sounds a little weird." So, but they did it. And come to find out that, a few days later, the check arrived, the person went to their bank, cashed it, took money out of their, you know, they put it in their account, and then sent the remaining money to this, a very nondescript name in the state of California via MoneyGram to give them the remaining money. And ultimately, are there out all the money that they, they sent. Because when they contacted the business, everything was fraudulent. But somehow, the people committing the fraud had enough information to know that this person had applied for a job with this business. And had enough information to, to get the person to believe that this was legitimate. And then, another victim here in town, out of no fault of their own, they're monitoring their credit account and all of a sudden see that their debit card is being used in Florida as they're here in Now Then. And they don't know how their information was obtained, but it's just, it brings up a whole, you know, we've talked before. If any of these things sound too good to be true, they are. Nobody's gonna give you any money if they're nothing. And just to protect the financial information that you have. Sometimes these people have nothing to do, the poor victims have nothing to do with, you know, losing their funds and stuff. But in a couple of the cases, they kind of, if they would've used a little bit more judgment and maybe not, not have taken a deal that was too good to be true, they might still have a little bit of their money. So we just try to stress to people to, to really be wary when it comes to your finances and your money. And nobody else is gonna look out for it as much as, as much as you are. So to really take care of your money. And that's all I have for the report.
Counsel, anything for the lieutenant? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can you try to test the feedback a little bit? Yeah, getting a little feedback.
We were, we tried to put him over here, thinking it might be the speakers, but there's.
It's Ben over here.
Maybe we have to move the speakers.
I don't know if it's the volume or the feedback, or whatever.
Yeah.
To get a little bit.
All right, floor items. We have, Gary Scott was here to speak on the floor items. He wanted to show us some electronic pictures of his cleanup. But I advised him we wouldn't be addressing it in particular. He needed to call Andy and show him, so they, they left. So they call Andy tomorrow and have him come out and take a look at the progress. Yeah, Mr. Dan Williams.
Dan Williams, 7967, 191st Lane, Northwest. Just a couple of things. One, at the last Parker Rec meeting, I brought up having Ron, owner of Markwell, come up and give us some information on wells for the city. And Jeff, you were there, and you said committee members shouldn't be doing that. But we've always brought people in just for information, so we can make better referrals. So I was wondering where, what's going on with that. Number two, at the workshop the other day, our Dan had some questions about whether foosball should even belong in the park down there. This has been going, this whole foosball, human foosball thing has been going on for over a year. You weren't around, but off, it was unanimously, all five members of the Parker Rec thought it was a good idea. The only discrepancy was the location there. We had four locations, and even Jeff was down there when we walked through and discussing the feasibility of each one. So there's never a doubt that whether it should go there, just on which locale would be the best, you know? And the reason I heard you was wondering why it was class five. And that's because of the durability, no maintenance, no weeds growing up through it. And if it just have grass, well, we had it for one day out here at the park for the Heritage Festival. It was a trough wherever people, you know, and it wasn't even a wet year. And it, and it got downtrodden pretty bad. So we need, we need a surface that was durable. Plus, it has to be a surface that, it can't be sand or wood chips or something because you're kicking a ball and you would kick debris up in people's faces. So that's why the class five was the best solution. I talked to asphalt people, and it was thousands of dollars just to pour a pad for that. And the class five was a lot cheaper. That's why. And then, a third, the third thing was, Mayor, you're our liaison, and you were against it. And I thought that was kind of hypocritical, since you were, thought it was a good idea at your Heritage Festival and that you wanted us to do it again the next year for your festival, but it's not good enough for the citizens in the park. I really don't understand the ideology on that. It'll be a success. The foosball, you don't need any talent to play like the volleyball. And if you just go down there and look at the footprints in the sand, you can see that gets used a lot. And that was my, one of my ideas. The disc golf was my idea, and that gets used a lot. This will get used a lot, too. If the council really has any doubts and wants it to be even more of a success, it should go down closer to the beach where we discussed the other three locations, so people don't have to go back and forth so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't foul my fist.
Thank you. All right. Planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I want to make a motion to approve ordinance 2017-01 as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Again, I just wouldn't have liked to have had some discussion on whether or not to go back to the 10 acres to be considered a, we were 10 acres. But our ordinance was changed originally. And 10 acres always worked really fine. I don't think we had any complaints or no real problems with that. And I would recommend that we do that, go back to 10 acres instead of 20.
And the advantages of that?
It would allow people with 10 acres on the same, by the same rules as people with 20 acres. Where they, for their, putting up buildings and stuff as far as permits and stuff like that. And there's a lot of people with 10 acres that, I know a lot of people that have hobby farm on 10 acres. They farm other ground besides the 10 acres, but they, they farm on 10 acres. And they should be granted the same rights as somebody that has 20 acres.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Barry Ricker. I agree with Councilmember Bettinger. And, you know, and again, I do recall us when we first discussed this, that that was a conversation that we brought up in a way it sounds, it wasn't really directed towards planning and zoning to review that aspect of it. So I guess from that aspect, you know, again, you know, did P&amp;Z get the full information that we were looking for? Because again, I recall, one of the questions that we did have was the fact, were we gonna go to, from the 20 to the 10? And that doesn't appear that it was really talked about.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
In reviewing the motion that was passed in January, there was no reference to reviewing the acreage for review to be passed on to planning and zoning, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Do you remember that being part of our discussion here, the 10 acre, to have that discussed at the planning and zoning and have them just hash that over? And it may not have been part of the motion, but we all sat here and shook our heads, "Yeah."
So I guess if that was to be looked at, it should have been in the motion for, for here's what the Planning and Zoning Commission should have, would be reviewing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
If, if that's the case, then our motions are gonna have to be much longer and detailed. Because obviously, we make several motions. The motion, you know, are usually streamlined to what the point is. You know, if we, if we make a motion to send something back to P&amp;Z for them to review, it should be the liaison's job then to review and bring back to that committee or commission, you know, what was discussed at the council meeting. And if that was, part of that was discussed at the council meeting, then that should be reviewed. Because we did ask them to, you know, to review the green acres. And again, as Councilman Bettinger references, we did discuss that as a group.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I think this proves that, as Councilmember Ricker said, is, we need to make sure that our motions are detailed. Because that is the direction the council has given. There could have been, and has been at numerous times, much different discussion. But the motion is the direction. So, and going forward, we need to be cognizant of that and to make sure that our motions truly do mirror the council's attention, or direction, excuse me.
I, I think that's important, too. We certainly didn't plan on going four months without having a P&amp;Z meeting. And if, if that was intended to be part of that, obviously, I missed it in, in their discussions. It was a public hearing. And so that wasn't part of the, the public hearing, notice it went out. So I think it would be helpful, we talked about this earlier, either earlier this year or late last year. I think we'll be more effective if we can, I don't know, they have to be longer, but it's certainly have the pertinent detail in the motion, so that that's what's documented and we're not relying so much on personal memories. But in, but in this case, obviously, it wasn't a discussion on reducing it. The, the main emphasis was clearing up the green acres requirement versus changing the, the size of the, that was in the ordinance, the land requirements that were in the ordinance. Other discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, Kukowski-Gustafson.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for approval for lot regifration to relocate a shared lot line between the two parcels as noted in the filing stated April 11th, 2017.
Seconded.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Code enforcement. Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, for the first item, Tommy Guyer, per discussion at the workshop, I move that we, let's receive and file it. The, the initial complaint was directed towards Mr. Guyer's license. And those licenses are not the responsibility of the city of Now Then. So we really, truly don't have anything to act on.
Any other comments on that? All right. Rust Ed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Would like to make a motion to direct staff to continue to monitor the pro, their project regularly and stay in contact with the Rust Eds to keep the project moving forward.
Look at that.
Motion is second, discussion. The letter from the building inspector, they have been in contact, they're looking at financing. And where he provided us a November deadline is on record. So as long as they have their financing, they're moving forward. And they do it by November, we should still be in good shape. All right, any other discussion? Seeing and seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
One of the things we talked about at the workshop was the King property. And we were just gonna move that, remove it. But I believe it was similar to the Guyer property that we said we'd leave it on the agenda so that we can say it's been discussed, there are no current issues, and so it's resolved. So I would move that.
Make that as a motion then?
A motion, yes, that, that we move that to the, the completed side of the planner's report.
All right, motion. On second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, which property was that?
This is the Kirk King property. Hearing and seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Road and Bridge.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Given that some neighboring cities do annually crack seal their, all their roads, and others evaluate their roads and crack seal as needed, that there may be roads on both ends of town that should be cracked sealed, I make a motion to have all the roads be evaluated, all the paved roads be evaluated, including the city parking lots, to crack seal as needed, up to the budgeted $36,000.
Seconded.
Okay, motion is second. Discussion. So if I'm hearing you right, you're saying rather than just crack seal, what are we on, the north half this year? North half? For our discussion at the workshop, which came up that some cities don't do it every year, and Joe's investigation, his path all evaluates and does those that need it, and those that don't, they hold over. And Old Grove and St. Francis do all of their paved roads every year. So you're asking that Joe or somebody evaluate the roads and then recommend which ones need crack sealing?
I'm, I'm wondering if there are roads on the north end that don't need to be crack sealed, and there's, there are, there may be roads that due to the frost heave on the south end that may be crack sealed if we have the $36,000 budgeted. And including the parking lots, it might be worth evaluating and getting closer, more, more roads done, more roads crack sealed that need, that needed.
All right. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
The, the south half was, was crack sealed last year. So that should not, definitely should not be, and they done that this year. And they probably should be evaluated every year, the half that needs to be done. I don't, in my personal belief, I don't think we need to crack seal every other year. Just driving across Old Viking, if you look, the cracks are, are sealed. So really, all they do is if there's any new cracks that come up, they seal them. And that, to me, that's a lot of money for just sealing up a few new cracks. And maybe we should go to, do half, you know, spread it out so we do, only do crack seal every other year, do half the city at a time. Or, or have Joe drive through them every year and just pick out the ones that need to be done. But we're kind of behind the eight ball here, because if we wait now, like Mr. Mayor said, we probably aren't gonna get on there, less to get it done this year. Their, they'll fill up their calendar, so.
So what, part of what I heard you say there, it sounds like you're agreeing with Councilman Bryan, that we should evaluate, rather than just say, "This half gets all done, evaluate, see which ones really need it, and target it."
I, I, in my opinion, I think we should let go, not do it this year, and let's evaluate for next year.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I guess I'm confused. If I'm hearing that we should look at crack sealing every other year, then the north end would be on the every other year schedule this year.
No, what I'm saying is a four-year schedule, so every other year you would do nothing. And so just do it every, like, every odd year, every even year you pick. Do half the city, whatever is needed. You shouldn't, the county seals their roads one time. They don't go back and do them again unless they, they go through and inspect them. And if they find a road that's got a bunch of new cracks, and then they'll schedule that road to be redone. But typically, that, that material is supposed to stretch as warranty, this shit hole.
So is it possible that there are roads on the north end that need to be crack sealed, as well as new cracks on the south end that need to be crack sealed?
The south end was just done last year, I would say it's good.
Okay, so then are the roads, are, are, instead of assuming that we just do all of the north end, should that be evaluated, or just completely skipped?
I would, I would say it's good. I would skip it this year and evaluate to do them next year. Because that's gonna take some time to get out and evaluate the roads.
And what, would we evaluate everything next year?
You could. You could, you should drive through all of them, really.
So then, instead of going from an every other year schedule, doing half of the city every other year, we would move to a full-city evaluation every other year?
Yes.
Isn't that kind of doing the exact same thing?
No. Because right now, you're paying that contractor to go through every single road in the north end.
Other than, other than, other than adding in the evaluation piece, we're still doing the same thing?
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rain.
It's, my, my understanding is that it, as, in, in the past, they crack seal everything south or everything north, whether, and there's no evaluation. They just all get done. So we may be crack sealing things that we crack sealed two years ago that we don't need to again, it's, it's still holding. It's, it's still holding. So, I do agree with Councilmember Bettinger that we should go to looking at the city, doing the city as a whole, doing it every other year versus doing half each year, but just not doing it a whole and without looking at first what needs to be done.
Right. That's what I'm saying, be adding in the evaluation piece, but we're, instead of, from a, you're either doing half of the city one year and half of the city the other year, but then you're just adding in the evaluation piece. So, you're still doing the entire, all the roads are being looked at every other year.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would think there's a possibility also, too, given that we're combining, looking at both sides of the city, that if we come up with additional lineal footage, we may get a better price, too, versus two smaller areas compared to one larger area. So, it, you know, I mean, that's a, it's a throw of the dice, but it's possible that we could maybe look at a cost savings if they're doing more at one time versus two.
I think that, you know, the fact that we've just been carte blanche, saying north half or south half, it's true, they, they may be ripping up crack seals that don't need to be, they may be skipping those crack seals or giving them a surface coat because they don't really need it. We haven't really evaluated prior to this which ones need it. We just said if it's north half, do it. So, we don't know how much is actually being done and how much needs to be done. So, I do think the evaluation is important. The fact that we haven't, we might go through and say there is nothing in the north half that needs it, or there's a few, and see if we can get those done. I hate to let it go and deteriorate. One of the, one of the things that Joe brought up at Road and Bridge a couple of months ago was the importance of maintaining the roads that are in reasonably good shape now, rather than letting them all get to a resurface or replace condition, if you want to do a better job maintaining what we have. So, I think that, you know, a compromise would be to take it, you know, if we just did the south half, we can presume a certain amount of retention there. There may be some needed there, but since the north hasn't been done in, since two years ago, back to the original proposal, having Joe evaluate that before we let out a bid on it and say 10% of what we thought needed it, needed it, so we don't need to spend $30,000, we need to, we should be able to do it $3,000. But I think the idea is we need to have some kind of baseline, too. And if we, if we put it off, I think, starting now, have Joe go out and take a look at the north half and say, here's the roads that really need it. He'll know better. He'll be able to give better feedback to Road and Bridge on, on other aspects of the road improvement plan, road maintenance plan, and then we can see what money really needs to be spent this year. And if he comes back and says, you know what, I've looked at it, and none of them need it, then we just say, okay, we don't bid anything. He comes back and says 10% or 50% of those need it, then we save 90% to 50% here. But I like the idea of at least Joe going out and taking a look, and, you know, the fact that we've never done that prior to a contract, going out and doing it, we really don't know what we're getting for a month. But I do think it's important to start now and know where we are, because we know most of our roads aren't in fantastic shapes.
Does that include the city parks and?
I believe they were on last year's, if I remember right. We did this parking lot here, and we just done this one, and go back to the records, but I thought we said Twin Lakes Park was included in the south half. That's why I think we used Old Viking as the, these were south half and north half. Now, again, if Joe's out here and he sees something that needs it, he should bring it to our attention, but I know we do our church parking lot, we, you know, it's years in between. If you get a good crack seal, it shouldn't be opening up every other year. But, again, we haven't looked at them, so we don't know. I think it's, if you look at the road plan, when was the last time Joe was out? Two years ago, three years ago? To update the road plan, so.
2015.
So, to me, I would say it makes sense to have Joe evaluate the north half and make a recommendation.
And then go to a two-year full city evaluation and repair plan.
Yeah, because we'll know everything was done that needed to be either last year or this year.
Some of that affect budgeting if we're moving money?
Well, it won't affect this year. I mean, we could under, we could underspan this year potentially.
Right. From, I could see from a budgeting perspective where we put half in for one year and somewhat the other half in for the next year to kind of balance it out. We wouldn't be doing that anymore, and we'd be moving it all into one specific year.
Well, I would also think that rather than crack sealing roads that don't need it, we could put that money into the road improvement fund. Because right now, we might be, you know, again, if we're budgeting $36,000 a year and using the most of it, and we could potentially be crack sealing things that don't need it, I'd rather put that, those extra tens of thousands of dollars into the road improvement plan or budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, right now, really, we're paying them to go out, to drive through all the roads from Viking North, and them, they take a look at it, they decide, find the cracks, drought them, fill them. You know, we're not doing that part. I mean, if we inspected ahead of time, we could decide, you know, Viking needs to be done, we could determine what roads need to crack seal. I mean, you still could do it every year, but do it based off the inspections ahead of time.
Yeah.
Right.
Not, not on the carte blanche to, the carte blanche to.
Not just blanket, we're doing half this year and half next year. I think we could save some money, because a lot of them I don't think need to be redone.
And you may even go, say, Old Viking, and go all the way out and say, this section needs it and this doesn't, doesn't need the whole thing. So, I agree. I think the evaluation is critical and limit it to what Joe determines, rather than let the contractor either rip out good seals or cover over good seals unnecessarily. Yeah, they're simply going by lineal footage.
I don't think they're even doing that. They're just taking a wild guess. There are so many lineal feet of road, yeah, but they're not, they're not measuring the cracks.
No.
The county actually, how theirs is paid for is by the pound.
That's what it should be.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The other aspect that way, too, is, you know, as we evaluate the roads ourselves, we can easily determine which roads break up and are breaking up much quicker than others, and, you know, we can start looking at underlying issues of why that is, or what roads, you know, are deteriorating faster and what ones we have to focus on more.
Good point. If you find that the half you weren't planning on doing has roads that break up every year, I think that's, that was Joe's point at the Road and Bridge, was let's take better care of the roads that haven't broken up yet, so that we can keep them from getting to that point while we're working on a plan to fix up the worst ones. So, back to the motion. The motion was to, rather than just approve the plan as it is, have Joe go out and review the roads and make recommendations. If I remember it right, what was?
Right. The only difference would be if we're saying the south doesn't need to be done, then it's if we went to, if we did.
I'm just going to worry about this year. What do I do this year? Do the north, have Joe look through the south quick and see if there's any needs to be done?
That was my original motion, to say that let's, if there may be something that we don't, we didn't see, let's at least get everything to the, to a set. If we're going to look at going to an every other year for everything, let's at least give it everything to a base point and then go from there.
And, and what I think I heard you say, Randy, last, was we can still evaluate every year, and, but just select the ones that need it and not blanket things. So, right now, you're saying you'd like to see, in particular, the north half, but, but the blacktop roads evaluated, Joe to identify where the crack seals needed, and then get our call.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I think you're talking about moving forward with the seal code, or the crack sealing on the north half.
Let's get a, no, let's get a, let's evaluate and see what needs to be done, and then we'll have to get a new bid for what needs to be done. Yeah, I wasn't saying, like, you know, we're going to need to get a new bid and see what's up, what's, what, what needs to be done. I'm not, wasn't saying, go ahead and go, go ahead and do it.
Who's second to that? You, Mayor?
I did. And I, I admit, I'm confused, so.
You're not the only one.
Huh?
You're not the only one.
Okay, thank you. So, so, Mr. Mayor, I would ask Councilmember O'Brien, based on the discussion we've had here, if he would withdraw his motion, and then let's, in detail, maybe by bullet point, say we want to look at eventually going to it every two years.
Let's just keep it to this year, though. Let's keep it to this budget, if we could, and then as part of the budget cycle, talk about what we want to do going forward. But if we say for this year, because we've got to get in the, get our bids in relatively quickly. I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
That'd be my only concern is, you know, if we obviously, if we don't figure out some game plan, if we have to wait a full month, are we actually going to be able to get in on somebody's schedule?
It may be a smaller amount.
Well, and, and we could easily make the motion, you know, that Joe evaluates the roads and deems what's necessary, and we do only what he deems necessary, and that bid will not exceed, you know, the budgeted amount.
I think that would be acceptable.
I'll second that.
Let's, let's act on the first motion first.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would draw my original motion.
All right. Councilmember Rickert, would you like to?
Yeah, if that's okay, if you're going to make a motion to have Joe go out, evaluate all roads, and determine which ones he thinks are necessary, and have those seal coded not to exceed the budgeted $36,000.
All right.
Crack seal.
Crack seal.
I'll second that.
All right. A motion is second. Any other discussion?
Paul's third.
Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Paul, is that? Phone's still on on the table.
Turn it down.
All right. A little longer than we thought. But if you hurry with these two, we'll be almost on schedule. All right. Overlay of Old Viking.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I have a motion to table the issue until the, we, until the, the meeting with, well, motion to table the issue for discussion, if that works or not.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a table, and I've been informed, tabling motion is not discussable, so. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I do think that for our workshop discussion, I think it's important that, you know, Councilmember Bettinger, you had talked about a, basically a process flow that is normally used in county and other municipalities, that I think we should capture that, take a look at the information that Corey provided us on the 429 process, and come up with a, a plan that we can share with the Road and Bridge. Here's the template for how we determine these things. I think that would be very helpful, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, too, I would like to get an estimate from Shane on, on the process of doing the feasibility study, the first step, what it would cost to get the process rolling, which is a rough estimate, what the project would cost, how many residences it involves, and...
And are you talking specifically Old Viking?
Yes.
All right, so, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
We have a motion is second. Any other discussion?
I don't want this project to stop completely, but I think there's questions about where we need to go and what we need to do here.
Let's, let's get the pricing so we can at least go there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
And I agree. I think we need to, as a council, figure out, you know, how we are going to fund these projects, and I think with that information, you know, we can, we can use that, we can see how many residents are truly impacted based on how we would want to think about doing it, so it would give us ideas, you know, and, you know, really see, okay, if, if this is a million-dollar project and we got 50 residents, you know, so it's going to give us a very good idea of what we really have to work with and what avenues we may want to investigate.
The other thing is we might know a little more about what the state's doing by that point, too, and what we have to work with. All right. Any other discussion? At this point, where the motion is to engage engineering firm, Shane Nelson, to put together cost for feasibility study in the process going forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
A motion to approve the request for seasonal help with staff to provide job descriptions of the work to be completed to council.
I'll second that for discussion. You're saying job description for work to be done. Job description would be one thing, a list of activities would be, to me, they're separate things. You know, the discussion we had at the workshop is what would Steve be doing if somebody else is driving truck? Joe mentioned that person would be driving truck, weather permitting and need-based, so he wouldn't be a regular employee except to be hauling gravel. And I, obviously, a seasonal worker is 180 days max. We have a part-time park maintenance, it says here, weed whipping, garbage collection, bathroom cleanup. So, you're really talking about job descriptions, the list of activities, because the only one that isn't listed is Steve, or are you talking both?
I don't, I'd be looking at more of what, what the, what Steve would be doing and what the part-time park maintenance assistant would be doing.
And the understanding that the truck driver would just be hauling gravel.
Just be hauling gravel when Joe calls him, and, you know, that he's not working on a rainy day.
Okay. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, now, you had made a motion to approve the request for seasonal help with the job descriptions, so are you asking that staff has to prepare the job descriptions or not, that, that list of activities and stuff to get that pre-approved prior to Joe being able to hire these people on, or what is the plan?
I'd say we can, I was, the motion was to say that, yeah, they could, to, Joe can go ahead and get those people, but we'd like to know what they're going to be doing.
Okay, so it's not contingent on that, but it's a...
Right, it's not contingent.
It is a requirement that's provided.
I just like to get a little more, you know, more details about what's specific.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I just had a question. So, before we go on, did, we understand that, so we're raising Steve's, one question was raising Steve's hourly rate, was one of the requests, and then to hire one guy to drive a truck, and then a seasonal worker. So, are we addressing all three of them? That it aren't this request, or just two of them?
I think that the request for council action has that $17 an hour for Steve in there.
But that wasn't part of his motion.
It was for all three.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I assumed it to be addressing the council, request for council action, with the caveat, he'd like to see a list. All right, now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the Park and.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
Park and Rec Committee is asking the council to approve the installation of a human foosball court at Twin Lakes Park, at the north end of the parking lot, with a cost not to exceed good five thousand dollars, but it, the co, approximate cost is twenty-two thousand, excuse me, two thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Markwell is going to be donating PVC piping.
Galvanized piping.
Well, I, okay, I guess, that's where I got confused, because there, the budget impact.
On here, it says galvanized. PVC has, is an added cost.
Okay, but under the budget impact, it's got it that PVC being donated by Markwell. That's where I had that wrong, because I, it was, they were going to donate the galvanized steel, not the PVC, so this is incorrect.
Well. The state's, oh, they might, you know, you know, really add, I talked to the last one.
So, just to clarify that, then the Park and Rec Committee is asking the council to approve the placement of a human foosball court at Twin Lakes Park, on the north side of the parking lot, for an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
All right, so is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Couple concerns I have is, 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 I haven't seen any, other than the Heritage Fest, which I see that human foosball is more of a novelty, per se, where people were coming and wanting to try it out. I don't see a huge demand for human foosball. Some of the practicality I have is, the fences would still need to be mowed around, and assuming that the Class V is going to be smooth enough, or is it, is it going to need, need more maintenance over time to, to keep it somewhat smooth out? And I don't know how many, approximately, how many people are you going to need at the park to actually play it? I can't imagine five people being able to play human foosball, because you, you would think you would need a group of people to play. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Uh, back when this project started, I was on Park and Rec, and, and when you did Google it and did look at it, there were a lot, there were actually quite a few communities who were doing things like this, and different, you know, avenues that, that were doing it. Is it a novelty? One never knows. You know, and again, you know, when we decided and put up the disc golf, we really didn't know how much people would use that. You know, I think it, you know, have to go back and look how many years ago that was when we did that, but at that point, you know, disc golf was relatively new. As far as, you know, what we discussed at the workshop, too, you know, I'm not sure, and I may be blind as a bat here, but I didn't see where a not to exceed five thousand dollars was. I see that the cost, impact cost was twenty-two seventy-six, you know, if, if we do it, you know, obviously, I think we could do it, if the impact cost was twenty-two hundred dollars, we could do it not to exceed three. But again, based on what we talked about, you know, in confirmation with, with city staff and maintenance, that, you know, say, if, if we go ahead and, and do this, and it's up and it's used, again, maybe being a novelty, it's used for the first summer, and then after that, it dies off, Joe thought that we, you know, we could use that fence elsewhere, so it's, the biggest expense in doing this by far is the fence itself, and that's based on all the quotes. North Star Fencing was, you know, the twenty-two seventy-six was their bid for the fence. You know, so, is it a risk? Yeah, there is some risk there. Do we have funds available in Park and Rec funds? Yes. But again, if, if it is something that dies, it's, we're not a hundred percent out, we can use that fencing somewhere else.
Well, I will say, when we voted on the disc golf, it was certainly more common than this, I mean, I did, I know Liz said it was, the, human foosball was at the camp her, her child was at, but I know, you know, at the time we put in the course out here, we were having trouble getting on courses down in, in the cities, where my kids are, so. I knew, I knew that to be popular, at least in the cities, I didn't know how, how much it would be out here, where we don't have the density they have down there, but at least it was pretty common in other areas. But it was, wasn't quite the gamble this one was, but, but that's, that's something we knew at the time, because of other courses. Some of them, like over in East Bethel, where they're actually paying for them, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I do know when, when this was, and, you know, first brought up, and the group started discussing it, Chairman Harilla actually said they had one set up at Twins Fest, you know, out on the baseball field, and so, you know, obviously, it is out there, you know, if they're going to take the time and energy and effort to set it up in an, in an atmosphere and environment like that. Because she actually got plans and ideas, and talked to a few people from that event.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
Um, I, again, as I said at the workshop, I, I am not in favor of this, I, I don't, I don't, I, I don't see that there's a need for it, the couple different examples, one was the Heritage Festival, yes, it did go over well at the Heritage Festival, but that's an air, was a one-day event that had, you know, over a thousand people at it, people came to do things at that event. The Twins Fest, I mean, they get thousands and thousands of people there, and they're looking at things that will draw the people there for that one day, or I think it's maybe a weekend. I, I just don't see the need for this, and we've approved additional staffing to, to work and, work in the parks, this is adding additional work, and I'm not in favor of it, and, and to Mr. Williams' comment, I am the liaison to Park and Rec, and that does not obligate me to vote for anything that is, or any or all items that are brought forward for the committee, from the committee.
But you are responsible to represent the committees, what the committee wants to communicate to the council.
Correct.
Independent of your opinion.
Correct.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Councilman Randall says that it's going to add additional city staff, we don't know that, you know, we don't know if, again, if, if it's a fence squared around, you know, we don't know if they can mow right up tight against it, and there, we don't have the weed whip around it, we don't know yet, you know, so you can't, you're speculating, and you can't do that. So you're, again, so, the assumption is, it is going to add additional city staff hours, and you don't know that. And again, my, my point is, you know, we do have two city parks, if this isn't a good idea, as a park liaison, what is a good idea to improve our parks, to help, you know, make it more, you know, enjoyable for our residents and whatnot to go there?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
Two items are the, the maintenance, there will be maintenance, nothing is ever maintenance-free, there will be, whether you have Class V down or not, even if you have asphalt down, which is not being asked for, but you still will have weeds coming up, you'll have grass coming up, I, I don't know if our mowers get right up to the fence, they'll have to be done, you've got to go in between, there will be maintenance, they will have to go out, and that Class V will get kicked up and kicked around, that will have to be shoveled or raked out, so there is maintenance. And, and to what I think is a better, what is good for us, I, I would like to see an expansion of the playground equipment at Twin Lakes and at Nowland Park, I think there is more use of the playground equipment at those parks than there would ever be any use of, of a foosball court, so that's where I, my priority would be, but that's not in this motion.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
How many, does anyone know how many people you would need to, and how many rows there would be, and how many people you would need to play this? I mean, disco, you can go out by yourself if you wanted to, depending on how ambitious you are, you could play to two people.
I, I could reasonably see you could play without a goalie. I mean, a, a full, full complement is probably five and a goalie on a side, but I would, I could see where you'd play reasonably three on a side, no goalie. Get much below that, you're chasing the ball on. Six, six to eight, minimum, maximum would probably be in the size we're looking at here, probably would be twelve. I mean, you can squeeze as many as you want, but at some point, you're just kicking each other. Yeah, I think we used to call that pole away, just throw balls at each other. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I've heard debate at Park and Rec, as well as tonight, about what's the ideal spot for this.
Yes.
What is the ideal spot for this? And if, are we saying if this goes through, that we're going to use that slot four?
That's what Park and Rec voted on.
Yeah, Park and Rec was four to one to use spot four.
Mr. Mayor.
I think it was said that would, that's informally a dog park right now, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
And I believe it was May of last year, the Park and Rec voted four to one to place it at the location number four. This year, in April, they, or in March, they also voted to place it in the same location.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Just a thought, if, based on the size, if this is something that, say, turns out to be novelty, and we approve, and it does turn out to be a novelty, could we not turn it into a dog, an official dog park, where people run, I don't know if it's big enough or not, just a thought.
I'd, I'd turn it into a tennis court.
Kind of hard to play tennis on Class V.
No, you'd have to come back with.
Yeah.
But I was, in, back when I could move a little better, we always went down to Ramsey and used their tennis courts, but.
Yeah, the only unfortunate thing, that fencing isn't high enough, apparently.
They're going with four-foot fencing here?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think it's relatively a, a low expense, I mean, the twenty-two seventy-six, to have it installed, to, to give it a try, and, and it'd be very little maintenance, I mean, you got to mow, you're mowing that area already, so, I mean, you, you may lose some grass, and you may end up with a little more weed whipping, it's, I don't think the maintenance is that big of a issue, and, and the cost is pretty low, and if it's something that was, people enjoyed it out here, I think it's something we could give it a try, and if it works, it works, if it don't, we can remove it, and the fence can be used for, something else can be used for the ball field, the fence within out, out there, or whatever, so, I'd be in support of this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Does anybody know how wide the mower is?
What's that?
A mower, the, the mower out at Twin Lakes?
We have multiple mowers.
Okay, so would you use, would you, would you want the mower to, the width from the back line to the extra fence to be the width of the, a mower? I don't know how far that would be.
You mean for the foosball?
Yeah, is that, then theoretically, the mower could, more paths go through, I don't know how far that would set it back.
Well, you could put your Class V back there, too, so you're not having to mow that section.
So is that extra Class V?
Yeah, I don't.
You don't go off of footage.
Mr. Mayor, I call the question.
All right. So the question is to proceed, what's our not to exceed price? There was a suggestion that, you had said five thousand.
I remember that dollar amount, but I will go with the twenty-two seventy-six, that is in the request for council action.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Could we just do it to not exceed three thousand? That'd be a lot less than the five, and get a little wiggle room on that.
I will change my motion to three thousand.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hit nay.
Motion carries. Councilmember Ray Mill.
The second item on Park and Rec is, Park and Rec is asking the council to approve the permanent location for the hockey rink in the location it is now, to add a pleasure rink next to it, with the toilet and warming house between the two rinks, according to the map provided, and that the Park and Rec Committee also recommends that we ask Nowland Council to have Joe take the hockey down, boards down as soon as possible.
I, I would appreciate if those could be made in separate motions.
I can move those separately, yes, the first one is the recommending that we place the hockey rink permanently where it is now, and add a pleasure rink ne, right next to it, with the toilet and warming house between the two rinks, according to the map.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
At the workshop, Councilmember Bettinger made reference to the current location of the hockey boards are not on classified parkland, and that there's a possibility for putting, for moving the fence next to the maintenance buil, in the maintenance area, moving the fence over, and possibly putting it back in there. I would see that there's possibly room for a pleasure rink in, in essence, behind the backstop of the baseball field. I think that would be a, should be considered as a, a better placement for the hockey, at least be considered for a better placement of the, of the hockey rink. It's still. It still provides access to parking as well as potential access to a well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
It all depends on how far we want to take this. If, you know, I think as it grows, I think we need, we need to, it'd be ideal to have footings and the intent or the thought moving forward is to take the boards up and down every year, to have concrete footings in that area, I think you'd upset a lot of people based on the baseball field. If you put it in between the field and the maintenance fence, I don't think that's big enough, you know, even moving the fence to have both a boarded surface and a non-boarded surface. You know, I think ideally, you know, and again, if we bring up the motion of a well, ideally the best spot, if we don't put it where it's at now, is on that north end of the soccer field.
Councilmember Bettinger, have you had any other thoughts since the workshop?
Yeah, I would like to maybe see it tabled and have the park company look at it a little further to see if it would, check out that location down there between the ball field and the maintenance facility, check out the soccer field and see where it's going to work best. Because once you put the footings in, that's going to be as long-term, I believe.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Councilmember Bettinger, can, instead of tabling, can we look to making a motion to?
No, we got a motion on the floor.
All right.
So the first thing you got to do is vote on this motion. So if you don't want this to be the permanent spot, you vote nay on this motion. And then you can talk about other motions. If you want this to be a permanent spot, you vote yes. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, my only concern is, based on the workshop and Councilman Bettinger's comments about if we put it there and if we dictate that as a permanent spot, do we then have to claim that as being park? And I don't know, nobody directed Cory to look into that any, at all, but do we know that for fact? You know, and again, I'm not opposed to moving it somewhere else, by all means, you know. I understand if, if we do at some point build, you know, no facility on that lot, you're going to need room for parking and whatnot and other things, but, you know, I don't want, again, this to get dragged out to the point where, but again, if it, if it truly impacts, you know, if we put it up, that once, you know, we use that for recreation or whatever we call it, if then we need to.
So can we ask that question then? So let's, let's vote on this one and then, because we still have to get that question answered, then we can direct staff to investigate it.
Well, I guess my point is if, if that's truly the case, I'd vote differently. You know, it, you know, I, because I don't see us doing anything on that lot for a while. So, and if that's the case, and then, you know, X amount of years down the road, we do get to that point and we need that area for parking or whatnot, and we can just move it or do whatever we got to do without any issues, I'd vote today to place it there for now.
So would you then like to see it tabled until that information is determined? Have staff check with the attorney and say, if we're using it for parkland, what does that do? Because then it goes back to Park and Rec. That's already decided. Yeah, if, if the case is yes, that's a conflict, that helps them decide. If it's not a conflict, and that's the best.
And again, that's where we're going back, because Councilman Bryan proposed kind of tableing it, but then you said get a motion on the floor.
Right.
And how do we want to do it? You know, again, if, we need to find a location, period.
Right, but that doesn't, that doesn't say this can never be. It's just saying for right now, until that, this other information's determined, right now, we're not ready to determine that's the permanent spot. Then we make a motion to direct staff to find out what the impact of that is, to help us make a decision on what the permanent spot would be, and then gives us time to investigate the alternatives as well. I don't know how much room there is between the ball field and the maintenance fence. But, that being said, we can vote on this and say, if we're not ready to say that's permanent, we vote this down now and then determine what's it going to take to figure out what, what is permanent. Make that our next motion. All right, so I'll call the question. All those in favor of making the current location the permanent spot for the hockey boards? Indicate by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion fails. Now, a motion to the next step. We want to have staff investigate the legality or legal ramifications of putting it there?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think we should have staff not only look at feasibility of putting it there, whether it turns into park ground or not, but not only that, but if we do put a future city hall, where's it going to be? I mean, that's the highest ground on that lot. I would assume it's going to be up on that end. So not only, so research all aspects. If we put a building up there, where's it going to be? If that's the area it was going to be, then we probably don't want a hockey rink there. But will a hockey rink fit down there between, if the fence is moved between the maintenance facility and the ball field? Or is the par location, put it on the hockey or on the soccer field? But research all of them and then discuss that and weigh it out and then make a decision. That's the way I believe we should go.
All right, do you like staff to, to investigate that?
Sure. I'll make sure staff investigate that. Sorry.
Well, no, Mr. Mayor, the only question that I have is, I'm not qualified to tell you which best location for a building to be located on that property. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Bettinger, would you be consider, would you consider, go ahead.
Hang on one second. From staff though, doesn't necessarily mean you. In this case, that's when an engineering firm could come in and say, if that's lot you're using, you got to keep your building this way. So staff could be to engage August and Anderson to give us advice, if we want to build on this lot, what do we got? So you just make the call to Shane.
Okay, I just needed to clarify because sometimes you refer to staff as internal and sometimes you just see staff.
And this is where being very specific in our motions is helpful.
Yeah.
Staff to include Cory being authorized to contact Shane.
Mr. Mayor, in conjunction with that, contact the city attorney to find out what happens if we do put, you know.
That was the initial, was the attorney would be, from a legal standpoint, and to Councilmember Bettinger's point, then we would engage, have Cory engage Shane to talk about buildability.
And the fire chief. If we put a well in for the fire department, where, where would that well need to be? Because that's, we're going to need that to.
Yeah, because it would be nice to have a well up here to fill the tankers. Or you guys got to go down to Ramsey all the time?
Yeah, otherwise, or if we fill the grass truck, we do it with garden hoses out of the spigot, so we sit and wait a while.
And we do have a wellhead into the lake down at Twin Lake.
Yeah, but it's, we, we've trained on it and it's not ideal.
So, we would like to know where the, the best location for a well from standpoint of, because it would be nice to be able to fill trucks here and certainly would be valuable to future skating services. So, we have a motion? Do we have a motion yet? Okay, the motion is to include, I'll move that we direct.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bettinger has a motion, we just never.
Never fleshed it out?
At the second, yeah, the second and.
Okay, so let's reiterate your motion.
That's what I was. I was going to get a word.
I think in the discussion, we kind of did.
Yeah.
So, just, I'll make a motion to have staff to investigate the best location for the hockey rink with input from Shane Nelson, and Bill did a lot for future city hall, fire chief for future city well, and the city attorney, park, whether that becomes park or not, well, when it's being used as a park.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
In conjunction with that, I'd like to make a motion to also direct staff to get quotes for footings and lighting for that, so we have one big complete package. Because if we move the warming house, we're going to need a pad for that as well.
So lighting and electrical to a warming house.
Correct. So.
Leave those heaters on that work.
They do work, we just need electrical power. And the AC units work too, it's just how, if we wanted to, if, you know, for example, if Heritage Festival wanted to use that as a headquarters or something, they could hook those up too.
Storm shelter.
Well, you know, depending, depending on where it, it's a pretty heavy duty problem. Depending on where it's located, it could be a concession facility as well. All right, so we have a motion?
Motion to have direct staff to get bids on doing concrete footings, a pad for the warming house and lighting for the skating area.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and second. What are you going to do with that one, Cory? You need more direction there.
No, now that you said staff, then I can talk with Andy and stuff too.
Yeah, I was going to say, this would be kind of hard for Joe even, I think, to.
Yeah, and we can call the Kynexus and stuff with the lighting because they, they want to install it at the end.
Well, they would, they would probably have a better recommendation on what was needed to, and I know as far as concrete contractors, there's, I know at least a couple in, Nowland residents who have already shown interest in doing something for it.
All right, other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I know there was a comment at the workshop that footings would, the bid for footings could be different based on where the rink goes? Is that true or not true?
I wouldn't think so because it's, we would want to do a standard, you know, frost footing, so I don't think it matters where you put it, it's still.
Footing, footing wouldn't be as critical as.
It would depend upon, as long as the pad is graded for the footing for the rink, then it shouldn't really change. If you didn't have the pad graded and had to put the footings in first, then it could. You know, they'd have to do more, they may have to do more digging or fill and compact and that type of thing.
Well, and in talking to one of the concrete contractors, who I talked to initially about doing footings, what he said he would do is on the, instead of doing the radiuses on the corners, he would actually square those off and then, based on whatever lighting we would want, put in, you know, whatever appropriate footing you would need for a post, so then you could have those posts on the corners and you'd have the concrete there.
I just want to see any, any lighting considerations. I don't think we need those stadium standards that are up. I mean, I think it needs to be, we're, we're out in the country, we should protect our sky as best we can.
And, and again.
Put our ordinances to.
Yeah, and again, that's where Kynexus comes in. They can recommend what would light it up enough and what the new LED.
I was going to say, they.
They do a pretty good job, so.
Any other discussion?
We have a second.
I thought I heard a second.
All of Randy.
No, Randy and Dan, I thought.
I made the motion, I think Randy said.
I'm sorry, yeah, this is your motion, sorry. All made the motion, Randy made the second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the last item on Park and Rec is, Park Committee is recommending that we ask city council to have Joe take down the hockey boards as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
Question obviously is then, how do we want to do that? Do we want city staff to solely do that or do we want to try to follow volunteers? And if we try to find volunteers, obviously, ideally would be to do it on a Saturday. So do we want to do kind of what we did, where we set them up with Joe and have him come in or?
If we do, it'd be nice if he could trade a Saturday for a weekday and come in and work with the volunteers. Is he flexible that way typically, Cory? So, again, I think our expectation was to work with volunteers and if Joe can trade a weekday for a Saturday or a half a day for half a day, that would be ideal. So.
I will work with Joe then to try to get, set up a date to get that done.
Mr. Mayor.
And then we'll be arranging them for future installation and they'll go into this building next door here.
Correct.
Oh, by the way, just because I'm thinking about it, if you could make note, did you see that big shingle that was laying out here?
Yeah.
I'm guessing it came off here somewhere.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
It was discussed, or it came up at the workshop, do we need the boards up to get footings, a bid on footings?
Well, if we're going to move, if we don't have, if that's not our permanent location, there's no point.
People I've talked to said no, you know, as long as they know the size and the radius. You're going to get a price either way. I mean, they don't need it for the price.
Okay, yeah, it was just mentioned, so I don't know if we need it or not. If we don't grade.
A couple said they would prefer it that way, just because based on width, bolt locations, that kind of thing, but again, if, if that's not going to be the permanent location and we don't know that.
And I think it's good to get them out of the sun.
Yeah, so.
All right, so is that a motion?
Mm-hmm.
And second. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Council items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to replace the furnace as recommended by Andy's email that was sent us this week on the 10th. Just replacing the main furnace for now and the funds can come from the gambling money that came from the business. Ham Lake Chamber of Commerce.
All right, motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Just trying to get at which, there are two system threes, which was the furnace that was suggested to replace? It wasn't clear just now where the funds were coming from.
Ham Lake Chamber of Commerce, gambling, charitable gambling, they sent us a check for $5,000.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayna.
To clarify, the check from the Ham Lake Chamber of Commerce was 47-22-29. To clarify, the check from the Ham Lake Chamber of Commerce is forty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-nine.
And in the email to furnace, he was talking about the Goodman, the GM SS ninety-six, which is eighty thousand BTU furnace.
Ninety percent efficient. Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
They're both ninety-six. They're both eighty thousand BTU. Was it the, the one with the ECM motor and the one without the ECM motor? One with the system three. That was his recommendation.
There's two system threes.
Oh.
I'm, I'm still, the clarification didn't clarify everything for me. I would be comfortable having a further discussion with Mr. Hazeman. I, I think he certainly, compared to all the other people that Andy contacted, has put in the best effort forward here, but I'm still confused. We got two system threes, we got a lot of similar numbers. And I, I still don't understand what, what the condition of air conditioner is. I would like to have a conversation, you know, I know we've used up our money with Andy, and so I'm not gonna ask him to do anything else. I would like to have a conversation with Mr. Hazeman and try and put this in the form of an actual proposal. I think we're close enough to the end of the heating season with the remedy that we put in. Will get us through this heating season, and I would like to do this thoroughly rather than patch it together because I was trying to go through this stuff from Andy and I came on two system threes. And and not really addressing the condition of our, our air conditioner. And as Jim Hazeman said when he was here, he never even looked at the second furnace. I would like to say, if you're gonna do both of them, what's, what's the best value to the city? And trust that this late in the heating season, we're, we're good to go with a patched up furnace. Cause I, I still think stuff we got last Friday didn't, didn't clear up all my questions. But I do appreciate Mr. Hazeman being more thorough than the others and actually coming in and talking with us, so. I think it's reasonable to have a further conversation if the council is alright with, you know, myself and maybe another council member sitting down with them and putting a real proposal together. Cause the spreadsheet doesn't really tell us any apples to apples comparison.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Yeah, yeah, cause the question that I had, obviously, if you look at Andy's first layout that he gave us, you know, you look at, there's two vendors that supply terrain furnaces and air conditioners. My question was, obviously, if you look at one, you know, you compare the, say ninety-six to ninety-seven percent efficiency, you know, there, there's a big difference in price there. And then you look at the difference in the AC units. One was a ton and a half and the other was a two ton, and the two ton was almost four hundred dollars cheaper.
Yep.
You know, so it's, I don't know, and again, then we got the detailed information from Air Comfort. That's where I was saying, you know, and asking a question based on the workshop is, we have this now, but what, for that price is, how does that compare to this? You know, truly an apples to apples comparison.
Yeah, and I, you know, the only thing that Andy brought up was Hidden Acres is a one man home, home-based business, so it's low overhead. Well, okay, Air Comfort, do we have to pay for his advertising and his additional people? Now, does that matter to us in, in response time on repairs or servicing or anything like that? Well, maybe. But to the tune of thousands of dollars, you're talking about a, and again, I don't have a model number. But on the Hidden Acres high efficiency recommendation, ninety-seven percent with an AC, it's ninety-six hundred compared to ninety-six percent, it's thirteen thousand.
Yeah, those were the two numbers that stood out to me.
Air Comfort, the one that Andy recommended is the, is the cheaper, cheaper one. It's not the two-stage motor.
Yeah, and again.
If you take that twenty-nine forty-five and you add four hundred on for the filter, that comes up to the twenty-nine four, or the.
Actually, four hundred off for the rebate.
Yeah. The fir, the first one is the stage motor. Stage furnace, the ECM motor.
But see, I'd like to even ask that question, you know, for two hundred dollars more, is the variable stage motor, what's the value to us in, in this type of building?
According to Jim, it's supposed to be more efficient. Especially around an air conditioner, it won't, it's not supposed to freeze up when it gets hot.
Right. The air conditioner we've got here, I don't know that we, if we've had any problem with it. If he's saying that the duct torque isn't sized right for the air conditioner, so we're over, you know, are we overcharging this to try and make it perform in smaller ducts? I don't know. But to me, it begs, it begs another question. I'd rather, rather than spend twenty-five hundred dollars and then ask the questions, I'd like to ask the questions first.
Mr. Ray.
Councilmember Rick.
I guess, and I agree, I think we, we have a little bit of time, but I think, you know, now that we do know we did receive some money, we, we should earmark that those funds towards this project.
Alright, we have a motion to proceed with system three, lesser cost, single-stage motor. With a consideration of, or consideration of further investigation. So, to proceed with the motion would be to go ahead and, and replace the one furnace. To deny the motion would be to, we'd have to have another motion to what to do next. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of proceeding with system three for twenty-five forty-five?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Hearing what you've mentioned about just having a sit down with Mr. Hazerman, I would make a motion that the mayor and myself sit down and work with Mr. Hazeman from Air Comfort Heating and Air to work up a proposal for the HVAC system.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
I would like to open that at least to Hidden Acres as well. So we have two things to compare to.
Does they have the same equipment?
I don't, I don't know if he has the, what is it?
Goodman?
Goodman, but again.
He might have a, a lower.
Yeah, cause again, based on just the train numbers, you know, they were, you know, considerably cheaper on the furnace itself on the higher efficiency. So again, I would rather pick two and so we got something to compare to.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettany.
Is this just for the, replacing the furnace, the one furnace then, to work with Jim Hazeman and hidden it? Or is this, are we rehashing the whole thing over, or?
Just to look at the, to look at the whole thing, to, to check out if the air, how, how much longer the air conditioner's potentially gonna last. What does the other furnace look like? Cause a comment was made that he had, he didn't look at that other furnace.
We really don't have the money to replace them and they're, they're working at this point, so why? We've been kicking this round, we're chasing our tail, we're running in circles. We don't have the money to do it and we're only had a problem with the one furnace. Let's replace that. And then we have estimates, if we wanna replace the rest of it, come budget time, let's budget for it and do it next year.
I think you could phase it in too. You could take a look and say, here's the package deal, or here's, here's what's all needed. Right now, you need a furnace before the next heating season. You've got the money for it. But then we at least have numbers to go into a budget with, say, here's what needs to be done. Let's get that in the budget for this, this summer. Budget discussion for the summer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
It would also allow us, having those, that second set of dollars, to know whether or not closer to the end of the year, we have the money available to us. Or, or whether we need to budget for twenty-oneteen.
We can take all that excess money from the crack ceiling.
Mr. Mayor.
Just kidding. Councilmember Rick.
I, I agree. Let's, let's focus on, well, we can have both, you know, give us the total picture, but again, focus and let them know upfront, you know, this is what we're gonna do now. This is what we have the funds to do now. So, but we wanna know, you know, moving forward or for budgeting purposes or whatnot, this is where we'd like to be. So we get it, almost two proposals. Replace the current furnace and then to expand beyond that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I would just ask the maker of the motion, if we can include in there that the funds for the initial replacement of the city hall furnace will be coming from the Ham Lake Chamber of Commerce funds.
Lock up those.
Yeah.
That's kinda what I had.
I know, and I, so I'm just adding it into the motion so that it is there.
Will Mr. Motion make? Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Alright, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last item on our agenda, pre-approved, initiate sealed bid process for recycling.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Oh no, we did move, did we move the fee schedule up?
Yes, we did.
We did, okay. I had an arrow on. Thank you, sorry. Mr. Mayor. I would move that we accept a preapproval of the grant application that Cory and I worked on for recycling center addition. For the second, I can talk to that.
Second.
Alright, motion is second.
This is the same process that we went through as a council in twenty-sixteen. We weren't successful based on dollars. We're hoping that we will be successful this year. And so that we can add to the items that we accept in our recycle center.
Same drawings as last year?
Correct.
And, and if I was reading this accurately, you had to have the grant application in by the, in the March?
It was March seventeenth, yes.
Alright, so what, what is being requested of the council then specifically? You have the grant applications in. What else do we need to do? Approve what you did?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually then, we're, we're asking for preapproval for advertising for bids for the expansion of the recycling center. If the city is successful in the bid being awarded. So basically, it's us giving approval that we can go out for bids if we're successful.
So you're saying, so we don't have to wait till the main meeting?
Correct.
The announcement is to be made by the eleventh?
Twelfth.
Twelfth? Okay, so if, if we were, are successful, and you're saying right now you wanna to proceed according to the schedule on to page four.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rick. Councilmember Ray, too, is there any reason why we can't go out for sealed bids now, even, you know, and for whatever reason say we're not successful? There's no reason we have to, if we get sealed bids, that we still have to go forward with the project?
Well, we wanted to wait to find out whether or not we, we were awarded the grant. If we are awarded the grant, we wanna go forward with sealed bids. There would be no purpose in going forward for sealed bids for an expansion that we wouldn't be doing if we don't get the grant.
I guess from my perspective, there would be somewhat of a purpose because when we did it last year, we got one bid late at the end of the year. So we don't know how realistic that bid really is. So even if we don't get funding this year, it would, and I guess from my perspective, it would be kinda nice to have some true idea what it would cost for that project.
I think though, if I was a contractor that was bidding on something that you didn't have the money for, that's a lot of work putting a eighty thousand dollar bid together. And, and I mean, if we can, if we find out in the next day or two whether we get it or not, then we can proceed because we know the money's coming and the county's good for it.
So the question is if, are we voting on if in the next week, we get the okay that Cory then can send, advertise for sending out for bids?
Yeah, basically what, you know, the timeline on page four would be to prepare the bid packet, advertise for sealed bids.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
To Councilmember Rick, correct. What we're requesting is that the council to preapprove us advertising for bids for the expansion, expansion of the recycling center. If we are successful in being awarded the twenty-seventeen Anoka County grant. If we aren't successful, we can have that discussion as to whether we still wanna try to go out for bids to see what the cost would be. But this is if we are successful, let's get started and go out for bids.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettany.
I just, on your timeline, your, your work schedule, you have compile sealed bids as they're submitted. And then prepare bid quotes sheet for city council, and then you're opening the sealed bids. You gotta reverse them. You could open the bids first.
No, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
To compile the sealed bids is basically just keeping them in a stack as they come in. We're not opening them.
They just collect them.
We're collecting them. Yeah, I could've used a better word, collecting them. Cory then, based on the return address from the, from the contractor, will do a, a bid sheet. So when we open them, we have ABC Mechanical, DEF Mechanical, Johnson Smith. And then we just have a spreadsheet that then we can put the numbers in. When the, when they're opened, then those numbers will go into it, into that spreadsheet. And then the council accepts a refund, accepts or rejects the bid. Does that make sense to you?
Yep, that makes, that makes more sense.
Okay.
I, I look at that, the way that reads differently.
Oh, okay, alright.
Other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second, the meeting is adjourned. Eight fifteen. What did it say? Eight fifteen? Close, fifteen fifty, sounds.